Commence the July 9th Planning and Zoning Meeting, July 9th, 2020. It's 1:05 or so in the afternoon. First order of business today, fellow members, is to review our minutes and to have a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Charlie Burrell. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Very well, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Very well, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. We'll start at Mr. Patrick's end of the table.
Mulberg, aye.
Thompson, aye.
Burrell, aye.
Felger, aye.
Bravender, aye.
Very well, motion passes, thank you.
Got that from Stacy. Stacy, you got this from Stacy, right?
All right, first on the agenda today is Mr. John Hovland. John?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, this item was continued for a site inspection. The request is for a conditional use permit for commercial outdoor recreation. We have a suggested motion based on the application and what's allowed under this type of use. I will turn it over to the Chair and the applicant.
Very well, Mr. Hovland, would you care to expand on your application, please?
Sure, thank you, I hope I can be heard. It was nice to have people come out and show the property, I enjoyed that. But as we stated last week, we're just looking for an opportunity to bring the public onto our farm that we're very pleased to have and to be in the area now. So, we've put together different ideas and different things that we could do, and we just need permission to do it safely for the public, and that's what we're looking for, the ability to do that. We have grapes that are growing fabulously, they're three feet tall already, which was wonderful, and strawberries at the moment, so.
Very well. Now, I know a number of commissioners were out there on a site visit, it's a very beautiful site.
Thank you.
I think what you have in mind is well within the ordinance here in Wright County, with perhaps a few modifications that we'll perhaps agree on. Now, before we start, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? Now, I'm not certain if there are those of you who are out there listening remotely, but you are, if you are, I think you have an opportunity to speak now.
Mr. Chair, we did not receive any additional comments since the last meeting, or any requests to call in and comment.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Riley. We'll bring it up to the Board then. Do any of the Board members have any comments, specifically what you saw at your site visit, or any concerns with the applicant's endeavor here? Mr. Mulberg, I'll start with your end of the table once again, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Jan?
This is Jan. First of all, Sean, I can't hear you at all when you talk, I mean, I hear a muffle, but that's about it. But I have no comments at this time either.
Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, the only comment I would have is that I think I would be very supportive of this. I think it would be a beautiful thing, and I think that we are addressing the township's concern with directing traffic, and I think people will come the way they want to come anyway, but I think by putting it out on any kind of advertising thing, giving directions to come in from the north as the township wishes, I think, I hope it works out. So, that's all I have.
Very well, now, the Chair will comment as well. I was at the site visit along with many of you, and I thought it was a great venue for what the applicant has in mind. One concern, I think I brought it up at the site visit, was whether or not security would be available, and I think the answer was in the affirmative. And that was about my only concern. Commissioner Bravner?
I have just one comment. I am in agreement with everything that he would like to do, I think it's a great thing for the area, and they support him, around him, his neighbors. In the staff report, I just wanted to ask the applicant, it says that you will not be using any of the outbuildings on your property, you understand that?
I do.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yep, I do, we have porta potties and tents.
Okay.
I did see that the lower portion of the barn, and it's a very beautiful barn, and I hope it stays there forever.
Thank you.
It's been well maintained, but I saw that the lower portion was sort of decorated as a reception area. You don't intend?
My daughter had a wedding there.
Oh, she did.
Yeah, so we had that right after we bought it, and so that was a few months, and so then, we still enjoy going down there, but we haven't put it away.
Okay, okay, so you won't be using it for events, which I don't think might be unfortunate, because it's a beautiful building.
Yeah.
But, so now, one question I have for you, Mr. Hovland, is that since you won't be using that building, will it be secure when you do have these other invitees on your property?
Yeah.
So, they're not wandering in there?
We should absolutely do that, so certainly, yeah, we can lock the garage doors that come down to the front.
Okay.
And then there was just old barn doors in the back, and we'll just put a latch on that.
All right, very well. Now, and you have an opportunity to see our proposed motion, have you?
I just did, yes, sir.
Okay, well, I see one note here, that you're asking for 8:00 AM as a start time for smaller and larger events.
On the weekend.
Oh, on the weekend.
Right, and 8:00 AM during the weekdays. And traditionally, on the weekend, often they don't have the weekdays, but on the weekend, we have started later, since it is the weekend. He's requesting 8:00 AM. That's for the Planning Commission to review and decide.
8:00 AM through Monday through Friday, and we're suggesting 11:00 start time on weekends. Is that correct, make clear?
We're telling you what we've had in other conditional use permits or similar on the weekend.
Has there been any variance from that?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be a variance.
Well, not a variance in a true sense, but is there, have we departed from that?
So, commercial outdoor recreation doesn't have a spelled out condition or standard for a start time. So, often conditional use permits for a class of use just develops on what we have done in the past, and what we've allowed other applicants to do. I don't know if we've necessarily had people ask one way or the other, although I'm thinking of some of the apple orchards. What time would they traditionally start on the weekend? We don't want people out there too early.
Well, they would open, you know, sometimes on the weekends when it's season for selling apples.
Season for selling apples.
Yeah.
Well, this is more about, I guess, the events, probably the larger events.
Well, we had berry picking, I mean, I think 11:30 might be kind of late to let people on the property, potentially, or if we have, we have a couple of classes, we want to do coffee in the vineyard and things like that.
Truly.
So, and that would, we'd want that a bit earlier, potentially.
What do you think on the large events, though?
I think, I think eight o'clock, I wouldn't want anybody at six or seven, but for any of the, anything that you were talking about, a family reunion or larger event, certainly doesn't, wouldn't need anybody there early, but for the smaller events, I think they spelled out, it would be good to have people be able to come at, say, eight.
Right, so perhaps we break out the large events? Because that's probably not going to be taking place at eight or nine AM anyhow?
And not, I don't have any plans for any large events at the time, right now anyway, so.
Right. Well, I would like to hear some more discussion from other Board members, please. Let's start with Mr. Bravender, do you have anything else?
Just one question on the smaller events. Are you anticipating these on a weekend also, like a smaller event on a weekend and a weekday?
We were, yes, sir, that was my thought.
And so, on a weekend, then you'd like to eight AM?
That was my, I mean, I'm just.
I understand that.
Yes, sir, but that, I would think, and just for some of the things that we had spelled out, we have, you know, some B classes, talking about working in the vineyard, people had an interest in actually just seeing it coming out, and some of those might be better mid-morning, morning.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my comments on the time would be to not be so restrictive with the 11:00 AM for some of the events. I would prefer to see at least, at a minimum, the smaller events start at eight throughout the week, Monday through Sunday. And the larger events, I guess I personally wouldn't have a problem with those starting at eight AM either, so that's my two cents. Charlie? Specifically on the time, I'd like to hear.
I agree with you, Ken.
All right. Jan?
I have no comment.
No comment. Mr. Mulberg?
My observation would be that I think we've been more concerned about ending times than starting times historically, and that with the scope of proposed activities out here and an eight AM start doesn't concern me in the least.
On either large or small events?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Very well.
It occurs to me that Out West probably has large events that make some noise. I don't know the timing of those events, but I would imagine those folks are up early and started with their events, then I don't see a reason to treat these guys differently.
You know, now that you bring that up, Mr. Mulberg, I agree, because I know that Out West has hay sales periodically, probably every two weeks or monthly, on a monthly basis, and I'm not certain if they wait till midday to start them. Those guys want to get going probably earlier, so I see no difference here.
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Very well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for commercial outdoor recreation for outdoor group events activities in accord with the narrative on-site plan filed with the following conditions. One, for the large weekend events, the maximum number of people on-site at any one time is limited to 200, and for smaller daily events, the maximum number of people on-site is 40. Number two, large events are limited to a maximum of 20 per year, and are only allowed on weekends, Friday through Sunday, and during the months of May through October. Number three, large events or smaller weekend events to start no earlier than eight AM. No amplified music is allowed, and all music must cease by 10:30 PM, and all activities must cease by 11:00 PM. No overnight activity. Smaller weekday events have operating hours of eight AM to six PM from May through October. Number six, all food and liquor must be catered in with licensed caterers and cannot be prepared on-site. Number seven, security must be present at all large events. Number eight, parking is approved in accord with the plans presented, however, the county reserves the right to require improved parking in the future if complications arise. No parking on the road at any time, and traffic for events should access the property from the north end of Gabler Avenue southeast to Fair Hill Drive southeast, per the township. Number nine, all events must take place outdoors, the use of any buildings are prohibited, tents are allowed for the events and shelter, but must be removed after the event is over. Porta potties would need to be provided for each event and meet county guidelines. Eleven, township reviews request in a year for compliance. Number twelve, any changes or expansions to the use of these conditions would require an amended CUP.
Very well, is there a second?
Mulberg, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify your vote and your name, and we'll start with Commissioner Bravner's end of the panel.
Bravner votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Burrell votes aye.
Thompson votes aye.
Mulberg votes aye.
Very well, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hovland, and best wishes to you, and I was, just out of curiosity, Mr. Hovland, how are you going to handle this COVID-19 thing with the?
Whatever the rules are, you know, again, we have enough space outside to keep everybody apart, but whatever the governor tells us we should be doing, I'll follow.
Very well, well, again, good luck to you.
Yep, thanks.
You can't. Want it?
I do.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, our second item on the agenda today is Vonko application. Sean?
Can we start with name, your name?
My name's Eric Olson, that's spelled A-R-I-C-O-L-S-E-N.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, the request is to amend the expiration date on a clay mining CUP that was previously issued. It is set to expire at the.
I can't hear you, Sean.
It is set to expire at the end of this year. The request is for a three-year extension. I will let the applicant describe the reason for the extension request.
Very well, and your name again, sir?
Eric Olson.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we were in this field summer of 2018, so June and July, by the beginning of August, we were pretty much done reclaiming the field. We hauled out almost 21,000 cubic yards of clay. And that was used for the landfill liner at the Vonko landfill across the river. Those construction projects typically only happen every other year. There's occasionally a need for clay on other projects that come up in the area. Our sister company, Vite, bids on projects where oftentimes they'll need clay. Haven't had any, you know, since then pop up, never know in the future what could come up. Originally, we had said there's 157,000 cubic yards of clay that we could take off that field and still maintain a 2% slope to keep it.
Did you say 157,000?
Correct. So, that means we've got, you know, a little over 136,000 cubic yards left, and we could shave off that field and still maintain that 2% slope to have the farming happen. After, we took the clay out last time, we didn't have any concerns with the landowners. The Zander's family farmed that, and they didn't have any issues after we replaced the top soil, and they continued farming it. We don't have any plans this year to use that clay. Next year, it's possible a project may come up, but it's more likely in two years we'll be building, expanding the landfill and using clay for that project in a couple of years.
In two years, so in other words, you'll be back after the, if should this pass, you'd be back once again for the 2022 season?
Potentially, yeah, that would be, that would be the soonest we would get back in there, unless another project happens to come up, but that's one in the future that we know is going to happen.
Now, you say you mined out about 21,000 yards already?
Correct.
And your first conditional use permit, was there a limit on that, or was it just kind of wide open in terms of the amount of material?
We basically said between, for the first phase, we would haul out between, I want to say 10,000 and 50,000, 10,000 and 50,000 cubic yards for that first phase.
So, the first phase is, what, 21,000 is what?
Correct.
Okay, very well, thank you. All right, now, I have a question, too, what about safety concerns? Did you experience any issues on the highway? I know there, I recall this site, there was some concern with trucks going easterly, and you guys now exit out, what, County Road 11?
Correct, we take, we head west on 106, and then we had south on 11, down to 37, and then we had east on 37 to get to 25.
Okay, very well.
And we didn't have any issues with that haul route. I think there was one phone call that came in after we were done hauling. I think one of the trucks that, it wasn't hauling clay, but it had left the site and headed east. But other than that, as far as I know, we didn't have any complaints during the hauling of the clay.
And Sean, your office hasn't received any concerns from the public?
Concerning the haul route?
Or anything?
No, and as far as the haul route goes, that was the one required by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, I think the reason we did not have issues is because they went the more traveled way.
Very well, thank you. All right, so if there are anyone out there in the public who would wish to comment on this, those who are listening or viewing remotely, please do so now. Okay, hearing none, let's bring it back up to the Board here, then. Why don't we start on Mr. Mulberg's end of the table here, and you have any comments, Patrick?
No comments from Commissioner Burrell either.
All right, Felger has no comment.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jan.
Sorry, Jan, I jumped the gun.
That's all right, that's quite all right, Sean. I just want to know if, what your reclamation plan is, once you start mining, is there any thing that you could share with us to tell us what that is? I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't hear at all, so maybe you've already explained that, but if you wouldn't mind just talking up a little bit louder, I'd appreciate it, and tell me.
Absolutely, sorry about that, is this a little bit better? Can you hear me okay?
I hear you better now, yes.
Okay, so before we start excavating out any clay, the first thing we do is strip the top soil off, and we actually put that around the perimeter of the excavation area, so that we can use that to control the stormwater during the excavation activities. And after we excavate out our clay, we grate out the subsurface, so that it drains at least at a 2% slope, and then we replace the top soil back on and it returns to farmable conditions.
And this would be done when you finish your mining operation, or as you go?
After each phase, so we excavated out, it took a couple of months in 2018 to get all the clay out, because we had a lot of rain that summer. But once we got all the clay out, we immediately put the top soil back, and that would happen after each phase of construction or of construction projects we would replace before, before the fall, basically, before the following growing season, I'm sorry, before the fall, we would replace the top soil so that the following growing season, they could farm it again.
And so, you expect that this would all be completed by what year?
Well, we would be able to potentially use some more material in the year 2022, and there could be, you know, the landfill that we use this clay for has a lifespan of over 30 years, so there's going to be an ongoing need for clay for this facility. It's not all going to come from this field, obviously, we need much more than that. But there's an ongoing need from just that one project, and like I said, there can be other projects that come up that need this kind of clay as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have an opportunity, Mr. Bravender?
Well, I have one question for Sean. I see that the township was requesting one year. Now, I'm hearing 2022 as far as the material they're going to use. What benefit is the permit to the end of 2021 going to do for you?
It would keep it active, I guess.
Is that the only reason?
Well, that was my question, I.
Yeah. I'm just thinking.
That's news to me, so we could have waited, it would have expired, but you reapply and then ask for a new date, so if we're sitting here knowing for a fact you're not going to mine.
Something may come up next year, but I'm just saying, we don't have a project scheduled for next year yet. It may happen, something may come up, they bid construction projects typically in the winter time, so if something came up this winter, we maybe have a use for it. You know, I kind of look at this as similar to Knife River and some of those other companies that have mines in different areas, so that when a project comes up in that geographic area, they can, they can actually use that facility.
Perhaps the compromise is 2022, and then advise the.
I agree with the sense of it, why?
Well, 2022 would then be that project year.
Yep.
And then advise the applicant, don't necessarily reapply unless you know, of course, if you don't know.
I mean, that would be the direction I would be leaning, would be put this to the end of 2022. I understand that we have a Maple Lake Township, we're saying 2021, but after hearing the narrative from the applicant, it doesn't make sense to me to just go to the end of 2021.
Yeah, I wasn't at the township meeting, so I don't know if they discussed to that level a detail.
Jan?
I think that we should honor the request of the Maple Lake Township to stick to the 2021.
So, he'll be back here again next year to apply again, then?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Burrell.
I'm just like, that just doesn't make sense to make it just go to the end of the year. I don't know why we don't continue it out, so we don't bother the applicant, you know, every year like this.
I think it's a condition that this is a conditional use permit, and the applicant is aware of that, and should abide by the rules and recommendations of the township.
Sean, the original CUP was in 2018?
Just looking that up.
Oh, okay.
The date I have.
Oh, it's 2017, I'm sorry.
2017.
Okay, so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. It's, oh, so the current CUP is expired. The current, the.
Will be expired.
Will be expired at the end of this year.
Right.
Now, the original CUP, I understand, was for three years.
I think the thought was, all the material was going to be removed in that time, or more, more than probably 20,000 cubic yards. I think the original was maybe 50, 60,000. I think the original was maybe 50, 60. Either way, yes, it was given a longer period than one year.
Because we thought more material would have been taken out?
Perhaps.
Well, the chair's, the chair's opinion is that I think all we're doing here is giving them, in essence, one more year till the end of 2021, thinking that, okay, the 2020 season, nothing's gonna happen. Could happen, but more likely not. And even next year, something may not occur, according to the applicant. They're looking at a project potentially in 2022. So I'm in agreement with Commissioner Bravender and Burrell in terms of extending this out, I would say at least until 2022. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Mulberg, and I have a question perhaps for Sean. In the notice of public hearing township response form that went to Maple Lake Township and that they signed up on, the staff notes there reflect that the phased borrow operation will expire December of 2020, and so was that information correct? And I couldn't hear everything that the applicant was saying, and so if there was additional information reported about the discussion that was had at the township, maybe I just missed it, but.
Commissioner Mulberg, I believe Sean is looking up that information as we speak.
I'm trying to process the question. So Pat, if your question was, did the township know the CUP expires 2020, end of this year, yes, it was on the township response form.
Is that staff note there, Sean, indicating that the current CUP was going to expire in 2020? It was not an indication that the phased operation itself and the one that they're currently applying for was going to be done and complete in this year?
The way I read it and the intent is to tell them, staff note, the phased borrow operation will expire December of 2020, meaning the current CUP. If somebody read that and it wasn't clear, was confused, I would not know that.
Okay, and if the applicant already said it, I apologize, but can anyone report, I guess, as to whether there was a discussion about 2021 versus 2022 that was held at the township? I am inclined with things like a sunset on a CUP to be deferential to townships when they indicate a timeframe, but I want to understand it as much as I can.
I believe, did you attend a township meeting?
I didn't.
I believe the township meeting, I want to say it was closed, it was just the town board members discussing it. I don't think they either had the applicant in front of them or, did they tell you it was closed to the?
They never contacted me.
I can't say it for a fact, but I, I thought Maple Lake had indicated they were restricting their meetings, but they did respond. Usually if they're not properly able to meet with an applicant or understand the details, they don't respond, or they tell us they haven't met with the applicant.
All right, is there any further discussion amongst us board members here? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Burrell. I, it was hard to hear from Sean when he was talking, but Commissioner Mulberg, are you okay with it as going to 2022? If you're not, I can go either way on this, I could go to the end of 2021 as well. I mean, I'm inclined, it's a strange time to be having these meetings and these issues don't get fully fleshed out, but I'm inclined, the Maple Lake Township Board is a pretty smart board, it's the, it's an operation that they're familiar with since it's on an expiring CUP. I'm inclined to abide by their recommendation on this. Yeah, and I, no, I agree with you on that, but, and we don't know, was it just a kind of sidebar conversation or was it something they were really super serious about? It's hard to tell, but I guess if you wanted to make that motion, I would support it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sean.
The only other option would be to continue it and give the applicant and staff to make sure what took place at the township level.
Did the board members hear what Sean said?
No.
Continue the item for the township?
Well, Ken, why don't you repeat it so we can hear?
All right, Sean made a, made a comment that perhaps we could continue it to find out what the township really wants and have the applicant be invited to the township meeting?
If possible.
If possible.
Or submit documents.
Not a bad idea either. And, you know, Mr. Chair, maybe this was already said and Sean's microphone is giving me trouble too, was the applicant at Maple Lake Township's meeting?
He was not.
No.
He was not invited.
Well.
Or I should say that, he was not made aware of their.
Might not have been opened.
I mean, it very, it very well could be that the township, if they had the opportunity to hear from the applicant like, like we did or took the opportunity, that we could get our decision right and that the township would agree that going through the 2022 season makes sense. I hear the appeal in it, but I want to, I want to, if we can, listen to the township.
Right, good idea, Patrick.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Yes. Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, I guess, you know, I would just leave it, could we ask the applicant, they're there right now, because if, if it's up to us right now, let's just say it's gonna be a one-year extension, or would he rather continue it and maybe get a chance at having it extended out longer if he met with the township? Maybe we'll just leave the call up to them.
I guess the, the first time I sat down with the township, I didn't feel like they were real receptive to this whole idea. I think they originally recommended the board not approve it, so I think they're, they're not necessarily advocating for this, and what, I'm not sure what the reason is necessarily. We did satisfy the, the only issue they brought up was the haul route, which we did satisfy that, so I guess if I could get, you know, a year extension, I think that'd be a good deal for me, and then, like you said, when it's, when meetings are more open next year, hopefully, we can, I can sit down with them and actually get the whole group together and talk them through what we've done, what we're gonna do, and make sure we're all on the same page, so they, they're not envisioning something that is not in line with what our plans are.
Okay, I don't know if anyone heard that, but just to recap, and sir, you correct me if I'm off.
Sure.
Speaking out of school here, but the applicant says to us board members that he would be comfortable with a one-year extension, meaning the end of 2021, and perhaps the future will bring next year, open meetings where if the applicant wishes to go beyond 2021, he can approach the township fully and openly at that time. Is that correct, Mr. Olson? Did I recap that accurately?
Very well, thank you.
You bet, okay. All right, there we have it, board. I would entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Mulberg, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Very well.
The motion would be to approve a conditional use permit for a temporary borrow pit for clay mining according to the plans and conditions listed in the technical memorandum submitted by Wink dated April 27, 2017, and June 1, 2017. And with the first proposed haul route as listed, hours in the technical memorandum as amended should reflect that there is no Saturday hauling and is limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The permit will expire December 1st of 2021. Any operations past that time will require another hearing by the Planning Commission. All conditions of the Wright County Soil and Water Conservation District's office shall be followed, and applicant shall post a $10,000 performance bond to benefit Wright County in the event the applicant fails to reclaim the property or fails to comply with any of the conditions listed in the permit.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, or excuse me, those indicating their vote, indicate their name and vote, and we'll start with Mr. Bravender.
Bravender votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Burrell votes aye.
Thompson votes aye.
Mulberg votes aye.
Okay, very well, thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Which wishes do you?
I have good day.
Good. All right, our item on the agenda now is Robert Gryes.
Right, I'm Steve Bruggerman, here for Robert.
Okay, and your name again was what?
Steve Bruggerman with Oakwood.
Steve Bruggerman. All right, Sean.
Can you hear me, Charlie?
Um, kind of.
Kind of.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, the property is zoned agriculture. It's in the land use plan for residential large lot. This is in Corinna Township, so the county has zoning authority, and if approved, the township would deal with the subdivision. This is the concept plan showing one riparian lot. With a request of R2 zoning. And the remainder of the lots not being riparian with a request of R2A zoning, which would coincide with residential large lot minimums, five to 10 acres. So the question for the Planning Commission is a recommendation on rezoning from agriculture S2 to residential classifications, so this property can be developed.
Are those two different PID's?
No, they are not. They are not contiguous, but they are the same PID.
And Sean, could you go back to the surrounding area zoning? Okay, so we've got egg, egg in the white, correct?
Yes.
And the green is egg res, which would be 10 acre minimum.
And then small lake shore development.
Correct.
From years ago, and then a little bit of residential zoning by it. It's the land use plan.
And that indicates residential large lot, meaning?
Usually it's five acres, there is a provision, if it's riparian, to go smaller. So that's why I pointed out that the smaller lot is riparian.
And you can only get one, with this particular scheme, you can only get one riparian lot out of there because of the R2, or R2?
Well, because of not having, the property doesn't have lakeshore other than that. They can't get more riparian.
Because of what, width or?
Well, it doesn't have lakeshore, not there.
Bring this up to him.
I'm talking the other, other side over there.
Yeah, so it would just be here.
Sean, can I bring this up to him?
Sure.
Might be able to see a little bit better here.
Is it commonplace, Sean, to have non-contiguous lots have the same PID?
I would not say it's commonplace, but it's not unusual either, and if for some reason it did have two different PID numbers, it likely would be guided by all the same planning and zoning requirements.
All right, I know the fellow commissioners, I'm not sure if they have the benefit of this concept plan or not. Was that in the packet?
Yeah.
Oh, it is? Okay, a little smaller scale, okay. All right, Sean, have you received any comments from the public on this?
Yes, but it's been submitted into staff report, and then no request to call in and make comment.
Okay. Mr., I'm sorry, I.
Steve.
Steve, would you care to expand on what the applicant is doing here?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
It is, but just to have it of record here, if you, I'm giving you an opportunity to speak if you.
Oh, okay, that, we're just taking a piece of agricultural land and turning it into residential. We've been working with Stacy on this to make sure we fit all the guidelines, and I think we got it figured out. We did go to Corinna Township and get their blessing before coming here, and we'll have to go back to them with the plating process.
Thank you. Well, any comments from the board?
Well, it's really difficult to, for me to under, I couldn't hear what you were saying, Sean, so I'll just hold my comments.
Charlie or Patrick, you have any comment?
No, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Burrell. I, I, it was, it was hard to hear, I agree with Jan, but I'm, I'm looking at the plan and I, I just think, I mean, know we have our zoning stuff and we do have some, hopefully some leeway on this, but I think it's a, it's a good use of our, of our land. It's not, it's in an area around the lake, it make, it will make some nice lots and we are gonna need building sites that, you know, so, I, I don't know, I, I would tend to favor it even though it's kind of possibly like we've done in the past sometimes, it's pushing things, pushing the envelope maybe a little bit.
pushing the envelope maybe a little bit. But I like the, I like the concept.
Mr. Chair?
I have a question, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
How far is this from, if it's going to be considered a residential lot, how far is this from a town?
A town.
Yes, I mean, is this out in the middle of nowhere, or is this adjacent to a community where there is the potential, in the future, for water and sewer and all the things that constitute a residential area?
Well, it's what, County Road 7, would be close, Maple Lake?
Dale, seven to 10 miles. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Seven to 10 miles?
Seven to 10 miles to...
Either town.
To Anadale, seven to 10 miles to Maple Lake, so that's probably about as remote as you could probably get. But I might note, however, this is around a lake, and if you look at the map that Sean has up now, a lot of lakeshore lots there. There are, it is surrounded by probably 10-acre residential lots, almost all, on all sides other than the lake. To the west, it looks like there's a large, what would that be, about a 30, 40 acre piece of perhaps woods or whatever? Not certain. Arsh land? Yes, little farmland, little woods. In terms of its proximity to a city, no, not close, relatively speaking. Sewer and water, I wouldn't venture to comment on when that would be, be out here, but there are a lot, a lot of residential lakeshore lots there, on that lake.
Are they all 10-acre lots, Mr. Chair?
The lakeshore, obviously not. But the surrounding area to the north is 10-acre lots, it looks like. The acres, lots to the east are 10 acres or slightly larger. Just to the south is a lake, and then on that particular lake are a number of residential small lakeshore lots, probably pre-ordinance, so they're very small. So it's well populated by the looks of it.
Has, has there been any site inspections recently on this, by this board or any previous board?
On this particular lake?
Yeah, on this particular project.
No. That's Cedar Lake to the north?
Sugar, Sugar.
Sugar Lake, okay, yeah, I think we had one on Sugar. We've had one on Sugar Lake, if you recall, Jan, where they...
Yeah, I remember that, I remember that. But I don't, I can't bring this up in my brain, so...
Right.
I would like to do a site inspection. I think this is a very crucial decision that we're making here, and I'd be more comfortable if we could actually visit the site.
All right. Mr. Bravender?
I'd like to make one comment. I just want to remind the board that both the Corinna Township Board of Supervisors and their planning and zoning have approved this request because of the design, it's something they really desire for that area. So I just wanted to make that comment because we seem to pick and choose when we want to listen to the township and when we don't.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, too. But I still would like to have a site inspection before I make a formal vote.
All right, any other thoughts, perhaps on continuing with the site inspection? I guess I'd be in favor of it.
Mr., I'm not opposed to it. I, like I said, I'd like to come, just looking at the map and the surroundings, I think it's very fitting, and I agree with the Corinna Board, but if Jan would want to do a site inspection, I'm not opposed to that.
All right. Would you like to make that a motion, Jan?
Yes, I would, I'll make a motion that we conduct a site inspection of the site, and continue this to the next meeting.
And the next meeting is?
The next scheduled meeting is July...
30th, isn't it?
30th.
July 30th, Jan.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, we have a motion?
Commissioner Burrell will second that.
Okay, very well, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Who is the second?
I don't know.
Burrell. Any discussion, hearing none?
I can't hear them.
All those in, all those voting, we'll start with Mr. Mulberg on the end over here.
Aye.
Jan Thompson, aye.
Burrell, aye.
Felger, aye.
Bravender, aye.
All right, motion passes. We will have a site inspection and see the gentlemen at our next meeting on July 30th.
Sounds good.
And now, ladies and gentlemen of the board, shall we set a date for our site inspection?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, you recall we need to do a site inspection for Sandra Dahlberg, panel in Clearwater, for a temporary seat. A new hearing's scheduled this year. So we have still, we still have time in August to go back out to that one. Want to consider both of these together?
And the Sandra Dahlberg, reasoning for that was what again?
Well, you did not give her a permit, it was a temporary permit, to have to be reworked by the Planning Commission. Wanted to do a site inspection for that new hearing. I recall we technically, yeah, we technically can, till September, want us to do a site inspection.
Did you hear that, fellow commissioners?
Kind of. There's another site inspection that we could do at the same time as this one at Indian Lake.
It's in that area, it's not too far.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. You don't need a motion for that.
Pick a date.
For Sandra Dahlberg?
For the whole.
Have to you pick a date?
Well, I should have been my motion to include the visit to Ms. Dahlberg's site.
That's fine, so we need a date.
All right, okay, so Charlie, is that okay with you? You seconded the motion?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, very well. We will set a date for two site inspections, one Sandra Dahlberg and one the current applicant, Robert Gryes.
Mr., we probably should revote on that, though, because...
We can wait for the date.
For whatever.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, we'll revote on that, same order as last time.
Mulberg, aye.
Thompson, aye.
Burrell, aye.
Felger, aye.
Bravender, aye.
Okay, very well, thank you. Now, sir, you want to hang around and find out when that site inspection is?
Sure can.
You want to, or you can call in, too?
I guess it really doesn't matter, because we're not going to be there, correct?
You don't have to be.
Okay.
If you want to be, we'll let you know when.
Let me know.
Yes.
Is there anything that we need from them when we go out there to explain to us?
There's access, right? There must be some field road and...
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Pretty easy to see.
I don't think so.
Okay, just questioning, I'm not familiar with that area, so...
Thank you, Steve.
Thought I'll find a way.
Oh, yeah. Snacks.
Oops, I should know better.
Hold it out of those in your life.
Should know better. There you are, sir. You bet.
Yep.
The security, if you, time for a meeting? I can just know that my next week, Monday, Wednesday are pretty busy, Thursday or Friday, the 16th or 17th, I could do it.
I'm looking right now here.
That'd be afternoon for me.
Okay, it has to be in the afternoon to accommodate Commissioner Burrell's schedule. What did I say?
For Mulberg, the 17th will work, the 16th won't.
17th. 17th, what day is that? That's a Friday.
Friday.
I'm...
Are we talking about July 17th? No, is that, that Friday, to do both inspections?
Yeah.
I'm good either, Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, well...
Thursday or Friday, 16th and 17th.
Pat said 16th.
Yeah, well, either one is fine with me.
Pat said 16th will work.
Go with the 17th, so Pat can...
Okay, oh, Patrick, you said 16th will not work, okay, and how about the 17th?
As of right now, anytime on the 17th is fine, Mr. Chair.
Jan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Charlie?
I'm good with that.
Okay, me, I'm okay. Dan, Bravender? Okay, let's see, we'll, if you wish, we can meet at the courthouse and drive out separately, or at the site, okay, courthouse, what, 1 o'clock? How long does it take to get out there, Sean? 1:15, 1:30 at the site?
1:30.
1:30 at the site, up on Indian Lake in Corinna Township, or 1 o'clock at the courthouse, and we'll caravan out there. Friday, July 17th, 1 o'clock here, 1:30 at the site.
Okay, sounds good.
We need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, conduct the site inspections on July 17th, meeting at the courthouse at 1 o'clock, or at the site at...
Oh, sorry.
Or at the site at 1:30.
Burrell will second.
All right. Can I just decree, Bravender, go ahead, yeah, vote.
Bravender votes aye.
Felger, aye. Burrell?
Burrell will be.
Thompson, aye.
Mulberg, aye.
Very well, thank you so much, board members. That concludes our business, Sean, unless you have anything else.
Have a meeting next time now.
One new item and then...
Oh, right, but I mean because of the continued and the...
Yeah.
No, that's all.
All right, well, I guess that concludes our meeting. Thank you, and see you later, everyone.